First item on the work session agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance by students from the Kindergarten Center. Say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public voice that stands one nation under God, in his law, with liberty and justice for all.
Certainly the cutest present of pledge allegiance I've ever been able to find. There was a closed session on December 17th, 2019, from 7:50 to 8:20 p.m. and this evening from 6:15 to 7:30 p.m. for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closure or liberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For those meetings, there were personnel litigation matters. The second item on the work session is a recognition of school board by Dr. McGarry.
I just want to say, in front of each board member this evening, historically we give gifts during this important time, which is school board recognition. In the state of Pennsylvania, there are 500 school districts, 4,500 members that are school board officials, oftentimes giving between six to 10 hours a week above and beyond in unpaid volunteer positions. So first, I want to thank anybody who's here in the audience who's been a board member and current board members, thank you so much for your dedication, your time, as we recognize you. Last year, we gave the board a book by Simon Sinek called Why Leaders Eat Last. And the key to that book, while we provided that, and we also gave this to the newer board members here, so we can keep this reading together, is that it talks about teamwork and why some teams pull together and why some teams don't. And the key to Simon Sinek's work here is the idea of the circle of safety and that we create this relationship where we're working together for the same common interest as school boards do. In your gift this evening, we have a new book, a New York Times bestseller by Brene Brown called Dare to Lead. And we will be giving you homework, even though it's a gift, and we'll be working on this throughout the year with our administrative team and the board. And in the cover, it goes like this: When we dare to lead, we don't pretend to have the right answers. We stay curious and ask the right questions. We don't see power as infinite and hoard it. We know that power becomes infinite when we share it with others. We don't avoid difficult conversations and situations. We lean into vulnerability when it's necessary to good work. So as the superintendent of schools, I want to say thank you and recognize you, the board, give you a round of applause for what you do here for the school district. And I look forward to reading both of these books with the newer board members and the current board as we move forward here, moving the district and reaching our goals. Thank you very much.
In 2002, the Upper Darby School Board established the first-ever School Board Leadership Award to go to an unsung hero within our school community. All past recipients have served as role models for our students and community by providing exemplary, caring service in a loyal, dependable, friendly, and humble manner. No one could fit that description more fittingly than our recipient tonight. This gentleman gives his heart and soul to the Upper Darby School District each and every day. For nearly 25 years, he has approached every day with unlimited energy and devotion. His dedication to the district has had a positive impact on students, parents, staff, and community for many years through many roles, from its early days as a bus driver to his years spent as the district courier, to serving as the purchasing assistant to his current role as an administrator. This year's unsung hero is none other than Mr. Joseph A. McGilvery. Wait, there's more. Joe is a humble and selfless leader in our district. While he is responsible for purchasing contracts and bids for this large district, he can often be found changing the bottles in office water coolers or changing the toner in the copy machines because no job is too big or too small for Joe. If you need his help with anything, he is there, and I can personally attest to that. This surely stems from his humble beginnings in Gladwin, PA, as the son of the town's first mailman along with his six siblings. Joe learned the value of hard work and love of family from his parents, and his work ethic and can-do attitude has contributed to his growth in the Upper Darby School District. Joe joined the Upper Darby School District in 1996 as a bus driver. He drove for nearly six years and was beloved by coworkers in the transportation office. Some of his fondest memories comes from his days of driving special needs children and the relationships he's formed with them and their families. In 2002, he left the transportation department and moved to the facilities department as a district courier. Joe was reliable and trustworthy as the courier, and it didn't go unnoticed. He spent a lot of time making deliveries to and from the administration offices, and administrators took note of his incredible work ethic, positive attitude, and bright mind. When the opportunity to move into the administration building as the assistant purchasing agent presented itself in early 2005, Joe went with it and got the job. Since then, his role morphed into the purchasing agent position and then a purchasing supervisor position, becoming part of the district's administration. In 2018, Joe's title changed to better reflect what he does for the district: Supervisor of Maintenance, Bids, and Contracts. He has been an integral part of the board-approved construction projects at Aronamic and in Clifton Heights, and he is excited to help the district grow in such a positive way. For most of his years in Upper Darby, Joe juggled two careers. For 22 years, he spent his nights and weekends as the bartender at Peabody's Pub in Havertown, where nobody knew him as Joe, only as Ace. I didn't know that. He was so well-known in Havertown that he couldn't go to the Wawa without running into dozens of people he knew. Some joked that he was so revered as the bartender that he should have been the mayor of Havertown. As a bartender, Ace's knowledge, especially about sports and music, would keep patrons engaged for hours and keep them coming back for more. He made many wonderful friends during his bartending years because of his ability to relate to all people all of the time. He ran a weekly quizzle game at Peabody's that was wildly popular, and to this day, he serves as the quiz master for several charity events each year. I didn't know that either. No matter what the job, Joe always gives 100% of himself to ensure that it's a success, that I do know. Joe can usually be found in his office long after the workday is ended and on weekends, but when he is not working, he enjoys spending time with friends and family. He is especially fond of time spent with his children, Kristen and Andrew, both Upper Darby High School graduates, and his granddaughter, Ally. Over the past few years, he's learned to appreciate travel and has visited California, Hawaii, and Europe all for the first time. But the highlight of each year has been the annual trip to Florida for spring training to see his beloved Philadelphia Phillies. We agree on that, I like the Phillies. While the job that Joe McGilvery does is remarkable, it is not the only thing that makes him an unsung hero. He earns this title because his love for the Upper Darby community leads his every decision. His selfless attitude and incredible work ethic serve as a model for everyone. He is always there to lend a helping hand, make our jobs easier, and make our lives better in every way. For that, Mr. Joe McGilvery is a hero who truly deserves the 2019-2020 School Board Leadership Award. Let's give him another round of applause.
Dr. McGarry?
Joe, I know you have somewhere to go, they want to celebrate you, so I'm going to take a part of what I was going to read in my superintendent's report and acknowledge you now. I just wanted to say, Joe, I appreciate all that you've done for the district and this organization. As you've heard from the write-up on Joe, he's an avid sports fan and namely a Phillies fan. Last winter during a school closing, Craig Rogers, Joe McGilvery, Dr. Manfred, and I were at work, as you've heard, Joe's often out there late, checking all facilities as we normally do in order to assess school conditions for the next day. It was late in the afternoon and we met to debrief. Prior to going home for the evening, a discussion of the Phillies came up. For some reason, the state of the Phillies led to a debate over all-time great pro-ball players and specific positions. It was a very heated discussion. We took the debate to another level, and our CFO found an app that calculated salaries and current conditions and values, as well as statistical information on the teams we drafted. We went position by position and disagreed on several players. Needless to say, Joe McGilvery fielded the best team. The recommendation by the administration for the board for this unsung hero award did not involve nearly as much debate. In fact, it was an unanimous recommendation by the administration for consideration by the board. In preparation for my comments this evening, knowing about this prestigious honor, I reflected on that late winter afternoon school closing debate. I thought about the discussion of what makes up a good team, the role of each player on a team, and the skills associated with specific positions and spot in a lineup. Joe McGilvery is without a doubt a key member of the Upper Darby School District team. As you've heard, our board president, Mr. Edward Brown, celebrates Joe McGilvery, I thought of his position on our team. Joe, you're perhaps the greatest utility player of all time. He's a guy who can fill in and play many, many positions, and I just wanted to say personally, thank you for all that you do for us each and every day. You could go celebrate now.
The regular meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. First, we're going to have a moment of silence for Stephen Flynn, one of our star employees from our Aronamic family who passed away over the holidays. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. There was a closed session on December 17th, 2019, from 7:50 to 8:20 p.m. and this evening from 6:15 until 7:30 p.m. for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closure or liberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For these matters, there were personnel litigation matters. Roll call, Board Secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Mr. Desnoy. Here. Mr. Neal.
Present.
Mr. Fields.
Here.
Ms. Curry.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Mitchell.
Yes.
One more item that was on the work session that we needed to do, so I'm sorry, I apologize for that.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Deana Williams, the principal of the Kindergarten Center. I would like to say thank you, President Brown, school board members, Superintendent Dr. McGarry, central administrators, staff, students, and community members for allowing us to present this evening. So I know every principal gets up here and talks about they have the luckiest job or the best school that they work in, but I truly, truly do have the best job in this district. So working at the Kindergarten Center, we have 625 kindergarteners every day come through our building, and it is remarkable. So they come in as little five-year-old babies and they leave us ready to move on to bigger and better things, and it's truly remarkable. A lot of the people that go through Upper Darby, including some of you, I believe, might have gone to the Kindergarten Center as well, and the teachers in my building have been there since it started. So in fact, we have Jerry Sullivan, who's here, been in the district over 30 years, as well as Ms. Embery and Mrs. Toomey as well, and Ms. McMeacon, who is in her first year of teaching at the Kindergarten Center this year. I would also like to thank Lyns Jeffrey for coming tonight to do our pledge of allegiance. You will also see in a few minutes, we're doing a presentation this evening called Music, Movement, and the Mind. And it's something that we're doing at the Kindergarten Center, it's a pilot program. And as you know, Lakeside Neurologic is working in the district. And so one of the programs that we're doing is that we are piloting classrooms that play calming music all day long throughout instruction. We also have teachers that take scheduled brain breaks throughout the day. So in our two-and-a-half-hour day, they might do four-to-five, three-to-four-minute brain breaks. And then we also have classrooms in our building that are practicing yoga, yoga either in the beginning of the day, at the end of the day, throughout the day. And the goal is to see how that creates culture and climate in our building. So I'm going to let the teachers and the students speak to that in our video, Movement, Music, and the Mind.
So we started working with Lakeside through their neurologic program. They talk about brain states and how when students are in the right brain state, they're more successful in the classrooms.
And they kind of suggested to Deana some ideas for how to remain calm and relaxed at school. We don't have special classes, we don't have playtime anymore, it's very academic, and some kids can't handle that stress.
So if I'm teaching something that I really want them to retain and they're going to need for the rest of their lives, then yeah, I'd rather them get up three to four minutes and retain that information so we can get back to doing, because they might lollygag.
So we have been implementing the yoga, music in the classrooms, and brain breaks to help keep them in the right brain state so that they can be successful learning. Classes are going to be practicing yoga throughout the day as a way to do big body movements so that they get some of their energy out and then also to calm them down.
We need to look for ways to keep them relaxed and calm and understand that we're not here to fool around, we're here to do our work, but it doesn't have to be super stressful.
Some are going to be listening to calm music all day so that they can just be in like a nice, calm state.
I just kind of like put Pandora on my phone and I typed in, you know, like relaxation. And there was a whole station called Relaxation Radio. It's string quartets and guys playing cello, and some music is just piano music.
My teacher just puts it on every day.
If I don't have it on when they walk in the room, where's the music? They expect it now. And if it helps them, that's great, but it was helping me keep myself grounded with all the craziness going on around me.
And then some are going to be practicing brain breaks.
Brain breaks are just like when you warm up before you do your work.
My class in particular decided to do four brain breaks a day. So we do Go Noodles. Go Noodle is the name of the program that we decided to do in my class. It's free for teachers online, and there's different categories that you can choose from. There's stretching, there's focus.
You can be stretching and then you can have more energy.
It helps them get up, get moving, get their brains back in focus. Like if I keep talking, they're just going to kind of lose it, so it's kind of good for them to stand up and to start moving around.
I use a lot of the Go Noodle ones where it's kind of a call and repeat.
First, says dog, and then we have to say dog, and dog cat, dog cat, dog cat moves. Itsy-bitsy, teeny, mini, little, we're foggy.
And it does help them focus in class a little bit more, too, so that is always a good thing for the teacher and for the kids.
I've noticed that since we started the program that the classrooms are a lot calmer when it is time for academics.
It helps me to learn when I'm doing it.
Long-term benefits definitely will help them with math, with reading, all because, again, it goes back to that attention span.
Once the students learn how to regulate their bodies, it's something that they can do on their own, especially with the yoga, if they're going to enjoy, you know, practicing yoga in the class, it's something that they can do at home.
I've already had parents, they're like, oh, we do this all the time at home now.
My sister dancing with me, because every time I'm on my dad's computer putting some brain breaks, she asks me, can I dance with you? And then I say, sure.
School can be tough for some kids, and we want them to not feel the pressures of curriculum demands, you know, so having brain breaks in some classrooms and having yoga in some classrooms, it's just like one more thing to help them along to get to where they need to be.
So I just want to say that, as you can see, not only from the teacher's point of view, but also from the student's point of view, it really does change your body and how you're feeling, so even for the teachers, it's a remarkable difference as well. So thank you so much for allowing us to present this evening. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent report. I think we have a future superstar sitting right there. He speaks very well to be so young, well, I'm very impressed. Got to talk to you, need you at Lockheed Martin in the near future. All right, approval of the minutes, Mrs. Curry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The minutes of the combined work session, regular meeting, and the reorganization meeting of December 3rd, 2020 are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Pro vote, Mr. Rogers, please.
Dr. Hague.
Aye.
Mr. Desnoy.
Aye.
Mr. Warsett.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye, motion carried. The report of the secretary, Mrs. Curry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The report of the secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Pro vote, please, Mr. Rogers.
Dr. Hague.
Aye.
Mr. Desnoy.
Aye.
Mr. Warsett.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye, motion carries. The report of the treasurer, Mr. Neal.
The report of the treasurer is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Pro vote, please, Mr. Rogers.
Dr. Hage.
Aye.
Mr. Desnoy.
Aye.
Mr. Warsett.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye, motion carries. We will now have the report of the student representatives, Lamia Memm and Karen Shazadi.
Good evening. We wanted to congratulate our UDHS cybersecurity team for qualifying for the semifinals of the National Youth Cyber Defense Competition, sponsored by the US Air Force. They placed second in their division and fifth out of 61 teams nationwide, statewide. This is a proud moment for Upper Darby High School District. Emmanuel Winkins, an Upper Darby alum, was selected to play the national anthem at the postseason Eagles game against the Seattle Hawks.
Upper Darby High School has also evaluated a new procedure for supporting events to ensure the safety of students, staff, and parents. The school's overall plan is to provide a safe and positive environment where everyone is able to attend supporting events and still have a good time. We plan to provide feedback as a result of a revised procedure. We are currently involved in the planning and preparation of an event called Speak Up. Thank you, board members, for approving this. Our event will take place on February 20th. We ask you to come and support and participate with us. We are excited about this opportunity to talk about and address ongoing topics that impact us as a school and community. The district will be sharing more information about this event.
Thank you, the Upper Darby School District Board of Directors, the administration, for allowing us to provide the monthly report. We will continue to serve the board and share joyous news across the district. Thank you.
The budget of personnel and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public and are recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. And now we will have the report of the superintendent by Dr. Dan McGarry.
Happy New Year, Board President Brown, members of the board, administration, teachers, staff, students, parents, and members of the community of Upper Darby School District. Good evening. I hope everyone is energized, as I am, following winter break and eager to continue to move our district forward. I do not know about all of you, but I am much more fond of the recent weather we have had this year in comparison to previous winters and school closures and delays that were necessary. Deana, thank you to the Kindergarten Center. I echo Mr. Brown's comments, wonderful presentation, and the trauma-informed care work that we're doing in the district is obviously paying off, so I appreciate your hard work, and that young student was outstanding. So thank you. As we begin a new calendar year, we have already started to plan for our 2021 budget. Prior to winter break, the Board of School Directors voted on an accelerated opt-out resolution not to exceed our Act 1 adjusted index of 3.8%. While we continue to advocate for a more fair and equitable funding of our public schools, we must also remain mindful of the burden increased taxes have on this community. Our chief financial officer, Mr. Craig Rogers, and I have already been meeting to go over the preliminary information for the upcoming budget process. Craig will also be holding department meetings in order to refine specific requests as we develop a balanced budget. We will present information to the board and public during upcoming finance and operation committee meetings and budget meetings. This Thursday, we will be holding our first comprehensive planning meeting with the individuals appointed by the Board of School Directors, staff selected by the Upper Darby Education Association, known as UDEA, and administrators selected by the Upper Darby Association of School Administrators, known as UDASSY. The final comprehensive plan is required to be approved to the public, provided to the public for 28 days prior to its adoption by the board. This month, during our committee meetings, we will be providing an update on our continued efforts to rebrand the district and preliminary information on the Sleep, Deprivation, and Adolescence: The Case for Delaying School Start Times Report that was published in October by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. We will be recommending next steps for our district and our community to consider. If you have an opportunity, we've posted the sleep study on the website. We will be asking for community input as we work with that project. I was fortunate enough this afternoon to meet with our new mayor. I look forward to meeting with our mayor moving forward. We both agree that we're going to work together to continue to celebrate this relationship. I will provide more updates on those meetings as we move forward. We have continued to move forward with our administrative recommendations on our multi-year, multi-phase facility improvements plan. We held the state-required Act 34 hearing for the renovation and expansion of Aronamic Elementary School on January 7th. Following a 30-day comment period from the public on the Aronamic project, the Board of School Directors will consider moving forward with the project in February. I appreciate the engagement, questions, comments, support, and concerns from the community. I want to say thank you to our solicitor, Kyle Berman, our chief financial officer, Craig Rogers, and our director of elementary school, Frank Salerno, for the preparation and professionalism during the Act 34 hearing. We are continuing our discussion to build a new elementary school on 69th Street as well, and we are also moving forward on the proposed new middle school in Clifton Heights. We will be back in front of the Clifton Heights Borough Planning Commission in February. As we prepare our budget, the Commonwealth is also preparing their budget. Some members of the public have raised questions regarding the Commonwealth's School Construction and Facilities Reimbursement Program, known as PLANCON. This is currently in moratorium, but we have been in contact with PDE over our plans. If PLANCON is funded and we are able to get all three of our projects into what they refer to as the Q, this community could see millions of dollars in reimbursement. The continued delays and back and forth over the much-needed facilities projects and improvements, however, could keep us from realizing any reimbursement and are increasing our legal fees and costs for each project. We will continue to follow the state budget, be prepared as we can to submit any of the necessary documentation for PLANCON, and will continue to push forward on each project in order to meet the timeline if the window and queue open in July. We are continuing to excel in athletics and academics. Congratulations to our Boys and Girls Swim Club and Dive Teams for their successes in the pool. We look forward to recognizing the teams as the season progresses, but I do want to say that Coach Casey O'Haire continues to reach out and send updates to us that they've had many firsts in the last 15 to 20 years in many of their accomplishments, and we look forward to recognizing them as the season goes on. I also want to recognize a ninth-grade student, Charlotte Wismer, who is here this evening, on her accomplishment as an illustrator for an independently published book, Miss Kitty and the Cracker Knocker. We have a recognition, if you want to come forward, we'll get a picture with you, President Brown. Much more of our academic excellence will be on display this Saturday, weather permitting. The gala will take place. In conversations with Ms. Barbara Banglian, and I continue to ask her if I can actually sing and participate, those conversations have not gone well. The theme this year is a royal gala. Each year, the gala performances truly highlight our tagline of opportunity, unity, and excellence. Our kids are outstanding, as are the staff who work with our children every single day. So if you have the opportunity, tickets are still available, please come out and show your support. Weather permitting, it will be this Saturday. If not, I believe it's the 25th of January would be the next opportunity to celebrate our students. Later this month, we'll be bringing forward our proposed new calendar for the 2021 Later this month, we'll be bringing forward our proposed new calendar for the 202021 school year. I've asked Ms. Christine Kelly to share a draft of the calendar with U D E A leadership and the Instruction and Curriculum teams. The calendar will require board approval and administration has recommended new teacher training from August eighteenth through the twentieth, all of the staff returning on August twenty-fifth through the twenty-eighth, and the students to begin on August thirty-first. We have also and will recommend half-days for the first week of school for elementary and middle school students. We wanted to get this out as early as we can so that our families and our staff can prepare for the summer and the start of the school year. Board President Brown, this concludes my report for this evening.
We will now have an update on the December seventeenth, 2019 Education and Pupil Services Committee meeting. Mrs. Curry will read the summary.
Thank you, President Brown. The Education and Pupil Services Committee meeting took place on Tuesday, December seventeenth, 2019, here in the boardroom at six P.M. All members were present except for myself due to illness. The agenda summary was as follows. There were three agenda items. District School Improvement Plans was the agenda item number one. Board action is required for all Title I schools. Dr. Gregory Manfree and Mr. Frank Salerno provided information on the district's school improvement plans. The presentation focused on the areas of accomplishments and action steps to address the identified needs. This item correlated to all of the goals of the U D S D comprehensive plan. The second agenda item is the Keystone Exam Information, which was informational. Mrs. Christine Kelly reviewed general testing guidelines as outlined by the Pennsylvania Department of Education, PDE, for the Keystone State Assessments. The presentation included information on electronic devices and opt-out procedures for parents and guardians. The Upper Darby website was updated with all appropriate state information. This item correlated to Goal One and Goal Five of the U D S D comprehensive plan. The third and last agenda item of the evening was the policies. Board action is required. A, Policy Three Three Three, Professional Development. There were no public comments on these agenda items.
Thank you, Mrs. Curry. We will now have an update on the December seventeenth, 2019 Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Dr. Hague will read the summary.
The Finance and Operations Committee met on Tuesday, December seventeenth, in the boardroom at seven P.M. There were three items on the agenda. The first item was informational. It was an update on the vendor fair, which is scheduled to be at the high school this Friday, January seventeenth. The district plans to educate new vendors on the process of becoming not only a U D S D vendor, but also the steps required to become a P.A. State Contract Approved Vendor as well. The vendor fair will also provide the opportunity to meet with local minority and female-owned businesses in order to expand our current vendor pool. The second item on the agenda, both of the first two items were informational. The second item was that the district administration provided an update on the security grant. The update included steps we've taken, the due diligence performed, and the next steps. This item correlated to Goal One of the U D S D comprehensive plan. And the final item on the agenda were the policies which require board action. The policies were Seven Oh Five, Facilities and Workplace Safety, Seven Oh Nine, Building Security, Eight Oh Five, Emergency Preparedness, Eight Oh Five Point One, Relations with Law Enforcement Agencies, Eight Oh Five Point Two, School Security Personnel. There was one public comment related to Agenda Item Number Two. The speaker asked if the cameras will be tied into a central command center or have individualized, individual monitoring by the school.
Thank you, Dr. Hague. The Instruction and Curriculum Report, Mrs. Curry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Are there any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Poll vote please, Mr. Rogers.
Dr. Hague.
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Aye.
Mr. War Savage.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye, motion carries. The Personnel Report. Mrs. Mitchell.
Yes. Thank you very much. The Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption. Second.
Are there any questions from the board?
Yes. I just had a comment tonight for Mr. Ernest Davis and Ms. Lisa Fleming. They are our two retirees this month. I wish them well and a healthy and lovely retirement.
Thank you. We echo that sentiment. Any other comments from the board?
I also wanted to say that Mr. Ernie played a huge role in my children's lives at Highland Park and I just in the aftercare program there, and he has a well-deserved retirement coming. He's done so much for this community. So, thank you, Mr. Ernie.
Thank you. I echo that. My boys knew him well. Any?
Sorry, I have one more thing. I also would like to welcome our new Director of Transportation, Forrest Tarver, to our family. Is Mr. Tarver in the room tonight? I'm not sure. No, okay. Well, hopefully we'll get to meet him soon.
Probably only transportation.
It's a hard job.
Any other comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Poll vote please, Mr. Rogers.
Dr. Hague.
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye, motion carries. The Policy Report, Mr. Des Noiers.
The Policy Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board?
Yes, I would just like to say these are, the policies up for second reading this evening will be implemented upon approval of the board, and all the changes in these policies are simply reflecting underlying changes in law that I have explained in previous meetings.
Any other comments from the board for the Policy Report? Okay, any other comments from the public? Poll vote, Mr. Rogers.
Dr. Hague.
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Aye.
Mr. War Savage.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye, motion carries. Now the Supplies Report, Mr. War Savage.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Supplies Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move forward, or pardon me, I move for its adoption.
Second. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Poll vote please, Mr. Rogers.
Dr. Hague.
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Aye.
Mr. War Savage.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye, motion carries. The Facilities Report, the Use of Facilities Report, and the Donation Report. Mr. Fields.
The Facilities Report, the Use of Facilities Report, and the Donation Report are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board?
I just have a real quick comment.
Sure.
I want to thank Cross America Partners from Allentown and Out of the Blue Productions from Philadelphia for their generous donations this month. Okay, we, the district, everybody that gets to use those really appreciates it. One of those was for a STEM program at Beverly Hills, and I know they really, really appreciate that a lot. Thank you very much.
Are there any other comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Poll vote please, Mr. Rogers.
Dr. Hague.
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Aye.
Mr. War Savage.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye, motion carries. The Finance and Budget Report, Mrs. Dr. Hague.
Thank you, Dr. Mr. Brown. The Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board?
I have a concern. In this Finance and Budget Report, there is a LERTA resolution, and I did notice that there seems to be some discrepancies. One is the address of the property, and the other is that the building permit says that the permit was issued for a four-story storage unit on Union Avenue, but the actual LERTA application only says three stories. I'm just wondering if we should maybe get the address cleaned up on the application, and, you know, are we doing a four-story or are we doing a three-story improvement in that area before we pass that? So, I am making a motion to table the LERTA resolution until we could get that cleaned up for now.
Is everyone in agreement that we should?
Second.
Second. Do we need a poll vote, or do we, okay, a poll vote?
Just on the tabling.
Right. Mr. Rogers, you can, can you poll the board, please, on tabling the LERTA?
Dr. Hague.
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers. Aye.
Mr. War Savage.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye. All right, the LERTA is tabled until we get clarification on that. Thank you for pointing that out. Mrs. Mitchell. Right. So, everything else, so now we're going to, are there any comments from the board on any other part of the Finance and Budget Report?
I have a comment. I just wanted to recognize the good work of the district. I noticed for the Johnson Controls Resolution that we are getting a decrease because we have improved our system, so the maintenance cost isn't as high. So, I just wanted to commend the district for doing their due diligence to make sure that taxpayers received money.
Sounds good. Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Please poll the board, Mr. Rogers.
Dr. Hague.
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Aye.
Mr. War Savage.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, now we're up to our collateral assignments, and we, at our last board meeting, said we would table until today's meeting, so we are going to assign those today. First one on the list is the Delaware County Community College, and Mrs. Curry will be our representative for that one. You have any comments for that?
I'm really excited about being the liaison for the Delaware County Community College. Looking forward to working with Dr. Gates and the rest of the school board directors who work hand-in-hand with the community college this year. Thank you for the assignment.
It'll be great. Thank you. The Delaware County, and we'll come back to that because we actually need a resolution for that one. Legislative Council will continue to be, Mr. Fields. I think you'll enjoy that. Do you have any comments, anything you want to add?
Thanks again for having me do this work again. I do enjoy it. So, real quick, in each of the school board directors, in your folder, there is a copy of the flyer for Advocacy Day, which is March twenty-third, and a copy of the flyer for the Legislative Breakfast, which is May fifteenth. Both of these are opportunities to meet our local legislators and I don't want to use the term lobby, but stress to them the importance of proper public school funding in this state. They're good events. You learn a lot. It's a big part of what the Legislative Council in Delaware County and the PSBA does across the state, just understanding what bills are up, are being proposed, and what funding's being proposed for the different districts and for the, for public education across the state. So, please take a look at those, and if you can attend them, that would be awesome. Legislative Council met January eighth. It was our first meeting of the year. It was a good meeting. There are a few bills being proposed. The one I want to talk about, there's two that kind of stand out. There's HB eighteen hundred and HB eighteen ninety-seven. Eighteen ninety-seven is still under work. So, it's about cyber charter. I wouldn't call it a reform bill. I'm going to give legislators a chance to kind of flesh it out some more before we talk about it more and have some comment on it. I do want to talk about HB eighteen hundred. This is a voucher program. It's being introduced for the Harrisburg area. Typically, what happens is with some of these school choice voucher-type programs, they introduce it in one area with the goal of it having go throughout the state. Okay. This particular bill, I'm going to give you an example of how it would work. Let's say, for example, a family is sending their kids to Germantown Academy. It's a pretty expensive private school, and they do this because they have the resources to do it, and it's possible that maybe their grandparents set up a fund to pay for that tuition. HB eighteen hundred would allow for this family to get a voucher against that tuition. Okay, they don't need it. They're already paying for it, but they would get a voucher against that tuition. A voucher that, like I said, they clearly don't need, and it would come out of the public education budget, and it would be tax dollars, our tax dollars, providing this voucher. Okay, HB eighteen hundred actually came up for a vote today and was voted down one hundred and twelve to eighty-four. So, that is a bipartisan vote, and that's great. They'll only clap. Okay, well, in response, that's good. It's a bipartisan vote. It voted down. That's great. One hundred and twelve to eighty-four, that's people from both parties saying this isn't a good bill. We're going to vote this down. In response, this, I was pointing to Lucy because she clapped last time. That's the big one. We're going to talk, that's, yeah, that's later. That got tabled. That got tabled, and it goes back to this. Okay, in response, the speaker did not record the vote. He set the vote aside. So, imagine we had a vote up here, and it was six to three, four something, and President Brown did not like it. He says, "I don't like that, so I'm going to pretend it didn't happen." That's what happened today in Harrisburg. Okay, right? He set it aside. The bill's now back on second consideration. This is where they put in amendments. Okay, so, I mentioned this because later this year, it's going to get, it's going to get a little busy. Okay, there's going to be a lot of advertisements and stuff like that. I think we should support people, this is my opinion, this is my opinion, I'm not speaking for the board here, but in my opinion, we should ask ourselves, is the person I'm voting for going to support a speaker that'll support public education and public education funding? Okay, and that will respond to the vote of their assembly? They won't look at a vote that doesn't work out for them ideologically and say, "It didn't happen. Set it aside." But it'll look at them and say, "Okay, that's the vote, and that's how democracy works." Just something to think about. So, that's what happened today with HB eighteen hundred. I can't remember the number off the top of my head, the charter reform bill that you're, that we were talking about last year. It never came to the floor for a vote, for the same reasons, for the same reasons. Okay, this is, this is how it's set up to work right now, and hopefully, at the end of the year, these things will change. But we keep advocating, we keep pushing, and we keep, we try to get people to understand that, that community's made up of everybody hurt when public education isn't funded correctly. Okay, it's not just, it's not just a homogeneous group out here. It's a diverse group out here, and we're all being hurt by legislators not getting their, getting their job done. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Continuing with the liaisons, for the Mendenhall Tyson Scholarship Committee, Dr. Hague agreed to be our representative on that and represent our interests and make sure we find the most worthy candidates for our prestigious scholarship award. Any comments?
Sounds great. I'm excited to hear about the great students.
All right. The Home and School Liaison, this was the most coveted one that everyone wanted. No, Mr. War Savage really wanted that one, and he, I think, as a recent graduate, as a, you know, relatively recent graduate, he looked forward to that assignment, so he will be our representative on the Home and School Committee. Any comments?
Yes, as a fairly recent graduate, class of two thousand and three, having attended Aronamink, Drexel Hill, Beverly Hills, and Upper Darby High School, I know firsthand, again, as a former student, how integral student, how integral to my success Home and School associations have been, and in my elected role continues to be a pleasure, and I'm living the dream of being of service to you, and I look forward to being a utility for the Home and School.
Thank you very much. Technology, I will continue to do that along with Mr. Fields. We will be the technology representatives for the board, okay? PSBA, I will be the primary person for PSBA as the representative, and Mrs. Curry will be the alternate for PSBA. Mr. Des Noiers, who does a great job with the Policy Committee, he will be our point person for policies, so. Any comments on that, Mr. Des Noiers?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I appreciate the vote of confidence. I will say, with the change in procedure around winter sports attendance, there has been a request that we, the board, take a look at Policy 904, which is, I believe, public attendance at district events. So, in the not-too-distant future, the community will probably see something about that. Thank you.
For Communications, Mrs. Mitchell will continue to do that along with Mr. Neal. He will help her with the communications piece on behalf of the board. Any comments on that?
I just wanted to thank the board for allowing me to do that, the communication for the last year out to the community. While it's a labor of love, sometimes it could use a second set of eyes, so I appreciate that Mr. Neal is going to be helping me with that. And I also want to apologize for the lateness of this month's update. Sort of last week got away from me, and then all of a sudden, I realized that I hadn't taken care of it, so hopefully, there'll be more time later in the future.
Thank you very much for taking on that task and continuing your task. Okay, for the IU, there's a resolution. Mrs. Mitchell will be our representative for the IU, and I'll just read the resolution at our regular meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors held on January 14. Mrs. Rachel Mitchell is appointed the candidate to serve as a member of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of School Directors for a term commencing January 6, 2020, and ending June 30, 2021. Any comment?
Thinking of motion.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept her as, okay, a second? Do we need to do, we don't need to do a poll vote, do we?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right, so, Mr. Rogers, can you poll the board, please?
Dr. Haig?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Aye.
Mr. War Savage?
Definite aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye. The vote for the nomination is eight to zero, zero abstaining. We do have one vacancy that we're looking to fill in the near future, so any comments?
Yes, I just wanted to thank you for your vote of confidence to serve as our representative on the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board. It is a second board, and I know two years ago, I had appointed Dr. Taylor to that position. Unbeknownst to myself, how much work it actually was being a new school board president. Dr. Taylor has filled me in on all the new duties, and I am really looking forward to working with school directors throughout the county to make sure that our intermediate unit is providing the best services to our students and to our community. So, thank you.
You're welcome. We look forward to you being an active member of that board and also continue to be an active member of our board. We come first. Okay? Let's see, what's next? I think it's old business next.
You have to say, I received a resignation from Dr. Taylor, and you need a motion to accept it.
This is a little bit of a sad one, but it's bittersweet. I mean, we wish her well in her new capacity, but I did receive a resignation today from Dr. Taylor dated January 6. I do need a motion to accept that, so we know she moved on to bigger and better things. All right? Poll vote, Mr. Rogers, to accept the resignation of Dr. Taylor to our board.
Dr. Haig?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Aye.
Mr. War Savage?
Aye.
Mr. Field?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye, motion carries. All right, we do wish her well in her new capacity on county council. Is there any old business from board members?
I do. Mr., could we ask Mr. Rogers to go over the process for filling the vacancy for the board and the public?
I think that would be helpful, Mr. Rogers, if you would, please.
Dr. Taylor's resignation was received on, or effective the 6th of January. We will be holding a special board meeting on the 21st, which is next Tuesday night, to conduct interviews for any applicants. Those applicants must be received by this Thursday by noon to be considered for the board's review over this weekend, which, again, will lead into the interviews on the 21st. Following the 21st, we have a regularly scheduled committee meeting on the 28th. We will start that meeting at 6:00 with actually a special voting meeting to conduct business to appoint the successful interview candidate to the board, and also any other business that we may have come forward to the board.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Old business. Earlier today, I attended a special education funding webinar conducted by PA Works. It was very detailed and provided great information on the rising cost of special education funding and the associated effect that it has on school districts and the local communities. They discussed ways to advocate to our elected officials, our elected state officials, and to our governor, since the funding has fallen behind by hundreds of millions of dollars. So, they had some excellent charts and some information that I think all of board members should definitely be aware of, and I'm going to share those charts with my colleagues, but I'm also going to ask Mr. Rogers to put it on our website so that the public can also see it. Very informative. Special Ed is a whole separate responsibility that we have as a district, and Dr. McGarry can certainly attest to the financial impact that we have, that we incur as a result of that, so I'll make those charts available to the public. Any other old business?
Yes, myself and Mr. Neal attended a mandatory school board, new school board director training early last month at Haverford Middle School, right, David?
Yes.
Yes, and it was, I say practically about everything I do on this board. It's wonderful, and I have a big smile on my face, but it was an enlightening experience because as school board directors, we're tasked with handling a whole bunch of stuff, and it isn't just coming out of thin air, it's because you place that trust in us. And by attending enrichment sessions, such as the one that myself and Mr. Neal had attended, it kind of helped to bring that point home, how substantial our responsibilities are to you, as well as our young people, and I appreciate you giving myself and Mr. Neal the opportunity to attend as elected officials.
Sounds great. So, you know everything now. You're ready. You're well versed in all school board matters? No, I'm only teasing. I'm only teasing.
Liaison.
Any other old business? Mr. Neal, you also attended. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
I did not.
Okay. Is there any new business from school board members? Seeing none, okay. We are now at the time for the public hearing. We will call on Upper Darby residents who signed in to address the board in the order in which they signed in. We would ask that you come forward, give your name and address, and present your comments in the three-minute time limit.
Kate Smith, 4716 Cedar Lane. My name's Kate Smith, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Upper Darby Arts and Education Foundation to promote the gala, which is this Saturday, January 18, at 3:00 PM in the Upper Darby Performing Arts Center. Thank you very much for including the announcement about the gala in the email that went out today, and thank you for including it in the superintendent's report. We are still selling tickets, and they're available at udfoundation.org, so people are invited to purchase them there. The gala shines a spotlight on this community by featuring the work of hundreds of district students, our dedicated and talented teachers and staff, and administrators, as everyone across the district is working together to create this outstanding afternoon concert. If you haven't experienced the gala, it's a beautiful reflection of our community, and it also helps the foundation leverage additional support to enrich the educational experience of each child in the district across all areas of the curricular and co-curricular and even extracurricular programs. In the past 21 years, more than 2,000 grants have brought more than $2.5 million to UDSD programs. Again, we thank you for helping us spread the word that tickets can be purchased at udfoundation.org. We're hoping for another sellout crowd. We hope the press will be there on Saturday to highlight and celebrate this team effort that is truly exceptional and distinguishes us in the state of Pennsylvania. The clips make for a great PR opportunity, so we really look forward to seeing you there. The different board members of the foundation will be there, hoping to meet and greet, and we just wanted to welcome everyone who may not have been to the gala before, and we hope to see you on Saturday. Thank you so much.
I can attest to how nice the gala is, and my daughter will be performing this Saturday, so I may stop by. Is there a motion for adjournment of the meeting?
So moved. Second.
All right. We want to adjourn with the all saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.